Zoom meeting, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. We have a regular member, Mr. Richard Sample, associate member, Mr. Larson, Troy Larson, our clerk, Jim Agubachi, myself, the chair, Nazir Akalasi, and we have assistant planner, Mr. Aaron Sheehan, and hopefully the other members will come in soon. I'm gonna start with the minutes for the for the April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one. We have April twenty-eight, two thousand twenty-one, May twelfth, two thousand twenty-one, May twenty-six, two thousand twenty-one, August eleventh, two thousand twenty-one, and August twenty-five, two thousand twenty-one. I guess all these minutes, I guess due to COVID, we had those all kinds of issues, so she wants them signed to go on record and file them.
That's that's correct, Nazir. They slipped through the cracks. They've been being sent to me, and I think all members right along. I've been reviewing them. They all look fine to me. Unless any other member has an objection, I'd move to approve as presented.
Rich, what do you think?
No objection. I agree.
I agree.
Troy, good. I'm okay with this. So all in favor, say aye, Rich.
Aye.
Troy?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Myself, aye. So that's a go. We need to go four nineteen LDE Holdings, request for amendment to a special permit, tack a rain. Is is LDE Holdings here?
Not getting moved to the March.
Too much? It moved too much? Okay.
No, I don't know. I've been trying to look it up. I'm having problems with my internet today.
They they that there's, they thought they might come last meeting, and then I asked Ken to see if they were gonna come by this meeting. He said they would. I mean, it's six twenty-nine, so they didn't roll in yet, so they might be coming. But I'm not a hundred percent, but they should be here tonight. That's what I was told.
Let's table that and try asking for them again at the end.
Okay, very well. Solar Bylaw Committee, we need to appoint a new member. I know Veronica, she didn't want us, so who would like to attend the solar? Who would volunteer?
I would, but I I just don't have a spare time at all right now.
Okay. Okay, Veronica's coming in. Okay, for the record, Veronica Devenese is logging in right now at six thirty-two PM.
Jake said he was coming tonight, too.
Jake said he did. He will?
That's I got that he was joining the meeting. I haven't seen him yet, but he said told me he was gonna join the meet.
All right, Jimmy, you wanna do the Troy? I know, I don't wanna do the solar. Troy, would you like to do the solar? Jimmy?
I'll continue. I'll just continue. I've been to as many meetings as most of the members at this point, so I'll just continue annoying them.
Okay, I don't have the time myself either. All right, I guess let's vote Jimmy. Be a member for the solar bylaw. All in favor, say aye. Well, let's make a motion. Sorry. So can somebody make a motion to appoint Jim for the solar bylaw committee?
Motion to appoint Jim Agubachi, our solar committee member.
All right, motion by Richard. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'll second.
Second by Troy. All in favor, say aye, Troy.
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
And myself, aye. It carries. So on the continued public hearing, on the two dash twenty-two CNS Home Solution, I guess they wanna continue to hear until they hear sound from conservation. Can I get a motion to continue this till three twenty-three? So I have some go ahead, go ahead, Rich.
I'd make a motion to move the let's see.
To continue till March twenty-third?
March twenty-third, yep.
Okay, I have a motion to continue two dash twenty-two for CNS Home Solution till March twenty-third to two thousand twenty-two. They put two thousand twenty-one.
Yeah, that was my fault. Sorry.
And pending conservation review. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jim. All in favor, say aye, Jim.
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Troy?
Aye.
And myself, Nazir, aye. Just for the record, Troy's in on the chair for Mr. Jake Morrison. He'll be
Not Nazir, I'm here.
Ah, okay, so I guess, next one.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just, I don't know if you remember, Anthony Grosso just had employment benefits. It's not on there, but he wanted to just speak on something. I don't know, you could do it now or do it after, but I was just reminding you that.
I just wanna go to Mr. Spillane first, then we go back to that.
Okay.
Public hearings four dash twenty-two, David Spillane, event is thirty-one, Agawam Lake Shore Drive, map one twenty-nine slash A lot one thousand one. Somebody wanna read this into the record? Hi, Jake.
Yeah, I'll do that right now. One one second. Okay. On the zoning waiver appeals, we'll hold a public hearing on February twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two at six thirty PM via Zoom to consider petition number four dash twenty-two for variance from the side yard setback requirements Article six, Table six twenty-eight, under the Wareham zoning bylaws to David Spillane of three zero nine one Cranberry Highway, Wareham, Mass. O two five three eight, seeking to construct the new single-family dwelling located at thirty-one Agawam Lake Shore Drive, Wareham, MA. O two five seven one, five seven one, assess the map one twenty-nine slash A dash one lot one oh one in the R one thirty zoning district.
Okay, very well. Mr. Spillane, is the house built? Think you mute, Bon. Unmute yourself. Mrs. Spillane.
Bottom left of the screen, Dave. Unmute yourself.
Framing on there, Nazir. There's no signing or anything.
Is that better?
Yes.
Yes. Yes, the house is is completely framed. It's 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 sheathed with plywood. It has a roof on it. It's not finished inside.
So you hear, I heard the variance to build the house. Was there ever a house there?
Yes, originally, there was an old, like a cabin there that we had raised.
Okay.
We had to raise that, and then we dug a foundation and and built the house.
Okay, you have a permit for the house, right?
Yes, of course.
And what are you here exactly before us for?
Well.
Because the the application says to build the house, but the house is built.
Yeah, I I saw that in the paper there, and it seemed a little misleading to me. I'd like to turn this over to Brian Grady, our engineer. Maybe he can speak on our behalf and clarify a few things for you.
Okay, Brian?
Yeah, thanks, Dave. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I could try to share my screen.
Yeah.
You folks see that?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so at the top of the page is the prior condition. There was a dwelling on the property which was raised to construct the new home. And you'll see that it had a five point seven foot setback to the abutting piece of land, and that's the entire length of the house. So Spillane is constructing a new dwelling, and the house proper will meet the ten-foot setback. We're only here tonight because it is a very small lot, fifty-four hundred square feet. They're building a modest house there, but even so, with the setback to the pond that has to be met, Conservation Commission issue setbacks, septic tank needed some variances, the leaching field to install. So there's a lot of constraints on this lot, but all we're asking for is this is the entrance way, set of stairs, and it will be covered, and that will be six feet from the property line. So we're greater than the five point seven, which existed for the entire home. We're only here for a set of covered stairs. The house itself exceeds ten feet on both sides. So really, that's that's all we're here for, is just so that they can bring their entrance around the side of the home and not in the front because of all the other constraints, the parking area in the front. It just made more sense to bring the entrance to the home along the side. I think if you also look in your packet, the abutter to the north here has reviewed and spoken with Dave, and there's an email in your packet that he has no objection to that covered stairway being within the ten-foot setback to his property line. So, you know, we're here because of the constraints of the size of the lot, wetlands issues, the setbacks that have to be maintained, no disturb, and all the other constraints for the sewage disposal system siting and getting some off-road parking. Answer any questions?
All right, very well. So I guess
I have a question, Nazir.
Yeah, go ahead.
What about the job and it? Did you say that the house encroaches on all the ten, the ten-foot on both sides? Because it didn't seem like it had ten feet on the left-hand side.
No, the house itself meets the ten-foot setback. We're only here for this covered stairway. That's the only thing that's within the ten feet. The house meets all the ten-foot setbacks all around.
I thought I heard you say that it encroaches on all on the ten-foot setbacks in what you just said.
I'm sorry if I said that. What I would have meant to say was the house meets the ten-foot required setback. Only the covered steps is within the ten feet.
Can you go, Rich?
But look at the pre-existing condition. The house was five point seven feet for the entire length.
It had seventeen on the other side. Now you're really, really filling that lot up, but go ahead. I'm 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 good with my question now.
All right, very well. So apparently, due to the shape of the lot, the gentleman's asking, Mrs. Spillane, asking for the variance. So I'll start with Veronica. Veronica, what do you have to say?
I have no questions, no comments.
Jake? Jake?
Nothing at this time.
Okay, and Jimmy?
I have no real questions. I'm very familiar with the project. The project was intended to meet all setbacks. And when the builder framed the house, he thought he was doing the Spillane's a big favor, and he and he built a roof out over those steps. Otherwise, we wouldn't even be here. And Mr. Spillane stopped all construction because he wanted to do everything right and not have to rip something off the house. They stopped the plumbers, the electrician, all because they've been sitting for a month and a half or two months just waiting to get to this meeting. So if we could give them some relief, I'm ready to I'm ready to make an affirmative vote, but I'd like to hear if there's any neighbors that would oppose.
Yeah, I wonder why why the inspector sent them for for a variance because he had five point seven previously. I don't understand. Anyway, that being said, I'm I wanna go to the to the public. Anyone who wants to speak in favor? Just for the record, I have a letter from Stephen A. King. It's about twenty-seven Agawam Lake Shore Drive, and he's in favor of the project. Anyone else in the public would like to speak in favor? None? Anyone wanna speak against this project? I hear none. Veronica, go back to you.
Yeah, I I agree with Jim. I read the documents and and what Mr. Grady had described with the septic and having some hardship with the size of the lot and trying to get it all in there. It makes sense to have it on the side, and where the neighbor's not opposed, I don't see a problem with it.
Yeah, the shape of the law absolutely creates a hardship. Richard, back to you. You had you want some more time?
I'm all set. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That being said, anything would you like to add, Mr. Spillane, before we close?
No, but I appreciate you taking the time to hear this matter.
Thank you, thank you. All right, can I have a motion to close?
Make a motion. We close the public portion of this hearing.
Okay, do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Veronica. All in favor, say aye, Veronica.
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Jake?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
And myself, Nazir, aye. Okay, so how's the board feel about the variance?
I make a motion. We grant relief as requested with standard conditions.
Okay, I have a motion on for Mr. Spillane four dash twenty-two to grant the variance and with the standard condition and the application meets statutory requirement of a section, Mass. General Laws forty-eight, forty-eight, section ten. Do I have a second on that?
A second.
Second by Veronica. All in favor, say aye, Veronica.
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Abstain?
Yep.
Jake?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So it carries four four zero one abstain, Mr. Richard Sample. And just put on the decision abstain, Richard. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Spillane. We'll go to the second one. James V Kilroy, special permit for eight or slash of variance, eighty-four Parkwood Drive. All right, can somebody read five dash twenty-two?
Yes, I can do that. Sorry, I was gonna ask Mr. Grady to just stop sharing his screen, but he did do that. Okay. There's only one where repeals will hold a public hearing on February twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two at six thirty PM via Zoom to consider petition number five dash twenty-two for a special permit from the floor area ratio requirements, Article six, Table six twenty-eight, and a special permit or variance due to the intensification of a lawfully non-conforming structure from the requirements of Article thirteen, section thirteen fifty-two, under the Wareham zoning bylaws to James V Kilroy of eighty foot, eighty-four Parkwood Drive, Wareham, Mass. O two five seven one, seeking to alter their pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling located at eighty-four Parkwood Drive, Wareham, Mass. O two five seven one, assesses map thirty-eight, lot three, in the R thirty zoning district.
All right, I guess one of those things, again, hopefully, I guess we change in that bylaw so and so we don't have to deal with those F A Rs. Okay, who is present in this case?
Good evening, Robert Tolo, J C Engineering.
Chairman, if I could interrupt?
Yes.
Knowing that we have enough members present for me to be able to excuse myself, I respectfully request I excuse myself at this time, and you appoint an associate member to hear this. I have a family matter that needs my attention.
Very well. Thank you, Jim. All right, Mr. Troy Larson will be sitting the rest of night on Mr. Agubachi's seats. All right, Mr. Barcello, can you proceed?
Thank you again, Robert Tolo from J C Engineering on behalf of James Kilroy. If I may share my screen, I'll show the plan. Mr. Kilroy currently has a two-story dwelling that's connected with a two-story garage or garage with an upper half a story, I guess you would call it. And it's connected by a single-story breezeway or enclosed habitable space between the two structures. Mr. Kilroy would like to construct a second floor so that he could have access from the second floor of the dwelling to the second floor of the garage without having to go downstairs, go through the garage and upset a stairway to get back into the finished space that's above the garage. What we're proposing is to raise the roof or cut the roof off and add walls and another roof on a footprint of approximately thirteen feet by sixteen feet. It's the total square footage area of about two hundred and nine square feet added to the property. Currently, the house is situated on a lot that's approximately sixty-six hundred square feet and would be subject to maximum floor area ratios. The total house right now is approximately forty-seven percent floor area on a where the regulations require no more than twenty-five percent. The proposed two hundred and nine square feet adds about three point one square feet total to the project, which we feel is pretty minimal, given the size of this lot. It's gonna show a couple pictures of the property and of the dwelling. Currently, this is on Parkwood Drive on the western side of the house facing east. This is the house in the garage. Again, facing it the same direction, facing it straight on, you basically can't see it, but as you're driving by, you'd see the structure, the structure would the peak of the roof would probably would be pretty much matched up with this peak and be just shallow, just below this peak of this roof. On the south side facing north, you wouldn't even see it. Same same is true from the one abutter to the north. You wouldn't see the the addition because it between the two structures. And obviously, the the house that's to the east is set down lower. This is a view from their backyard, really not impacting any views of anything. Their views are across the water to the south, so really no impact to the abutters. Fairly straightforward project. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, very well. So apparently, this is one of those cases, an existing non-conforming law with the structure on it. If the board if the board feels so detrimental to the neighborhood, we'll act upon it as a variance. If the board doesn't feel that way, we will act upon it as a special permit. I wanna start my questions with the board members. I'll start by Richard. What do you think, Rich?
I went by the project and took took time to look around at a few other houses and a few other lots around there, and I I feel absolutely fine with this project.
Okay, very well. Jake?
I'm okay with this project as well.
Troy?
I don't have any issues with the project.
Veronica?
What's above the the garage right now? It looks like it's living space. Is it currently usable?
Yeah, it's finished like a living room area, basically. Pool. I think it's got a pool table and a TV.
And then the second story is just gonna, is it just a hallway? Is that what it's gonna do? It's create a hall?
Yeah, yeah, they're gonna, they have enough room to provide. Actually, I have floor plans if I can. I'll show you, show them to you. Actually, it doesn't show the floor plan on this layout. But yeah, it was, there was enough room in the existing house to provided a space in one of the rooms to open a door and basically connect the two, the two structures, two second floors.
I'm sorry, Veronica. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
That's that's what it looked like. I had the drawings that you gave, but there was no interior floor plan, so I just wanted to clarify that what was happening.
Yeah, just to mention, this area is served by solar, so it doesn't doesn't really matter. And so they're asking for three percent increase on the F A R. And again, it's an existing non-conforming. I wanna go to the public. Is there anyone on the public wanna speak in favor of this project? I hear none. Anyone on the public wanna speak against this project? Also, I hear none. I guess if there's nothing else, before we close, want to say anything else, Mr. Barcello? Barcello?
Yeah, I did forget to mention that the proposed addition does meet the required setbacks twenty feet off the front and ten off the side. So we're not looking for any relief in regards to setback requirements or height. It's just the the floor area ratio that we're exceeding by an additional three percent.
Okay, very well. Any more, any other comments from the board before we close? Okay, if I hear none, can I have a motion to close?
They're moved.
Okay, I have a motion to close by Veronica. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Richard. All in favor, say aye, Richard?
Aye.
Jake?
Aye.
Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So it's closed. On now, how does the board feel? Does the board feel is the, it's not substantially detrimental to the neighborhood, and we want, can we act upon it as a special permit? Or does the board feel otherwise? Can I have a motion on that?
I'd like to make a motion to grant this as a special permit.
Okay, we have a motion to grant this a special permit. I have a second on that.
Second.
Second by Richard. All in favor, say aye. Veronica?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Troy?
Aye.
Jake?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Now, on the special permit, what's the wishes?
Standard conditions, right?
Right. So I have a motion by Richard to grant with the standard condition with the with the plan submitted by G, I mean, not G, J C Engineering and date of it. What's the date on that, Brad? On that plan?
January nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Okay, so January nineteen, twenty twenty-two. So that's the motion by Richard. Do I have a second on that?
A second.
Second by Veronica. All in favor, say aye, Veronica?
Aye.
Richard? Jake?
Aye.
And Troy?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So it carries five zero zero.
Thank you for your time.
You're very welcome. Thank you. And now we go back to Grosso. I know he's not on the on the agenda. Aaron had asked me to just put it on the, to discuss it on like new business under the topics that the chairman did not reasonably anticipate. So so what is it, Mr. Grosso? Mr. Grosso? Just unmute yourself.
Chairman, I'm here.
Okay, so what is it? What's about what project? What's it about?
One Ray Avenue, One Ray Avenue LLC, Commodore Motor Motors.
Oh, that's that's the one in West Wareham?
Yes.
Near the courthouse. And was that, was that project approved?
Yes, it was, sir. I'm asking for, I'm asking for a one-year extension.
Was it special permit or various? Do you recall? Was it special permit?
It was a special permit because of the catalog.
Okay, and how long it's been?
Two years.
Two years. Okay, so you'd like to extend it for a year?
Yes, I would, sir.
All right, you have the the case number, Aaron?
It's, I don't have it. It's not a, it's from two thousand eighteen. I'm pretty certain, so it wasn't scanned in, so I don't have it. I can't pull it up, but I'm pretty sure it was twenty-three eighteen. That's the updated number.
Right. Now, we started on eighteen, but I guess the decision, I remember it took a while. So I guess we decided like twenty nineteen or twenty twenty, something like this. While you're to get it out. So let's, Richard, what do you think? For an extension for gentlemen?
I'm I'm good with it.
Troy?
I'm fine with it.
Veronica?
What's the reason for the extension?
Covid. Grosso?
Covid.
Covid. What is the reason? The magic word.
Covid. That's a good reason.
Hey, there's a good reason. I tell you. It's a good reason. Jake, you good with that?
Yes.
All right, and myself, I don't mind extending for a year, but that's only one extension. So that's my decision. Okay, if that's fine, I would like to get a motion to extend for One Ray Ave for Mr. Grosso, the special permit for a catalog for one year. Do I have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Veronica to grant for one year and only one year, no no further extension for One Ray Ave for Mr. Anthony Grosso. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Troy. All in favor, say aye, Veronica?
Aye.
Troy?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Jake?
Aye.
And myself, Nazir, aye. So we got you one year, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman and Board.
Yeah, very welcome. Very welcome. All right, Aaron, what do we got? We gotta go back to
Yeah, it's the LDE Holdings. I I think they might be here to speak on this. If not, I'm not sure. They might be here.
Is LDE holding here? LDE holding?
That could, it could be Frank Mulligan. I can't remember the name. That sounds very familiar to me. I'm not sure if he's having trouble unmuting or something, but
Somebody by that name on the screen?
No, no, I I just was covering it. I'm from the Courier. I I just was tuning in, guys. I I didn't mean to speak to you. Thank you.
No, no, I, I, I just was covering it. I'm from, uh, the courier. I, I just was tuning in, guys. I, I didn't mean to speak to you. Thank you, though.
Oh.
Okay, so who, who are we speaking to? Mister? Hello?
Hi, I'm, my name's Frank Mulligan. I'm a reporter from the Wareham Courier. I tune in the meetings now and again just to, I, I had no business with you guys. Sorry, I wasn't even, I wasn't paying attention. I'm sorry, I didn't even know it. I've become a subject. Sorry about that.
Frank, no, Frank, I know who you are. That's why I recognize your name. Yeah, I recognize you. Yeah, so apparently, uh, L D Holdings is not here. Um, so I'm not sure what's going on. That I'll have to ask Ken again. He told me they were supposed to be here tonight, but, um, I mean, I can explain briefly what they were doing, or you wanna wait until they come to a meeting, or if they come to a meeting at all.
The second time they didn't, is there a miscommunication with them?
I don't, I don't know what's going on. I'm not in direct contact with them. Ken has been, so I don't know exactly what has been going on with that, but the, the, what's basically happened is they have a host community agreement with the town. They have a marijuana, I think it's retail, and they're trying to get a carrier license from the state. And they wanna amend the special permit they have that they received is from twenty nineteen. Well, that was when the petition, that's when the case started. Um, cause they wanna add, they wanna change two of the parking spots to put these carrier vehicles, delivery vehicles. So that was what they're, that's what I, from my knowledge, that's what they're trying to do. I don't know why they're not here, but maybe they'll be here next time. I'll have to talk to Ken tomorrow about that.
Okay, so you guys said that I wasn't here the last, the last time, so we asked last time, didn't show up. Do you recall that, Richard?
I, I thought that was them. I, I don't, I think we called for them, and I don't think anybody was, uh, present.
Yeah, there, there was some, they were supposed, so last time, there was some communication, I think it was between the lawyer and the actual applicant. And one person said they were coming, and the person said they were didn't, and then I, no one showed up. And I thought they were coming this time. I asked Ken today. These, no one showed up again, so I don't, I don't know what's going on with that.
Regardless, we could act upon it. That's not a public hearing. It's just a minor modification if the boards feel it's minor. So what they're asking, this is the place, I believe it's an industrial park, right? Okay, so they have agriculture and they have, uh, dispensary, two permits, and they wanna do, uh, I believe, delivery, right?
Well, they, yeah, they wanna have a courier service. They're trying to get, I don't know, they're in the process of getting the, uh, the, uh, permit from the state, and they wanna change, amend the special permit because they want to change to the sparking spot, so they could put their delivery vehicles there.
Yeah. I, I personally don't think it's a minor modification, but let's ask the board. Troy, what do you think? Do you think it's minor or major? They wanna add delivery for marijuana. Let me explain how it goes. If you think it's minor, it, it passes right now if the board agrees. If we get four out of five would say it's minor modification, they get it, they go to state, do it. If we think it's major, they have to come back with plans showing us how they're gonna park the cars, how they're gonna secure delivery. Uh, I believe in the past, we did grant one, and I guess it get appealed. Uh, I think we, I think we did it quick because I, after that, I did read a lot of conditions from the state. And I think we should be a little bit more careful. I know it's a state permit, but we should be a little bit more careful in granting these things. That, that delivery thing, that delivery thing, I'm not too, it's gotta be, we, we have to go through it, but that's my opinion. So do you think it's minor or major?
With, with that being, what?
Go ahead, Richard.
With that being said, I, I believe it's a major.
Okay, so Richard think it's a major. Troy?
Yeah, after your excellent explanation, I agree.
Uh, Jake? Morrison?
Um, yeah, I'm, I'm not, n- nothing at this time.
Okay, Veronica?
I, I think it's a major modification.
Okay, Aaron, this is your answer. It's major modification. So you let them know if they wanna proceeds, public here. That's good. That's very well. So did we miss anything else? Anything else left on the agenda? I guess nothing, right?
Um, I have one, I just one thing quickly I wanna talk about. So, um, I have a application that I haven't processed yet because I want to ask the board opinion about going back in person or Zoom. The planning board is going back in person in March. I have two applications that already sent all the notices that are gonna be in March ninth. That's there, notice to stay Zoom. The next one I'm gonna process is for the twenty-third. So I, we could go back in person on March twenty-third, and I can write the notices as in person, so there's no confusion between, you know, Zoom and online and in person, but I wanted to ask you, the board first, what do you wanna do for March? Do you wanna stay online? Do you wanna go back to in-person on March twenty-third?
It's easier for you, Aaron.
What do you like, Richard?
I said whatever's easier for Aaron. I, I, we could, we could do whatever he, he would like.
Is there any way for me to do, I, I, I'm not gonna be back until April, beginning of April, so I won't be able to make it in person.
The, yeah, the meetings, they, they, because of the town meeting vote, there, it's gonna be hybrid, so you should have an option if you can to be there through online. So there, so it will be in-person, but it'll also be a hybrid meeting, so that'll be the option too. If you go back in person.
All right, great.
All right, I, March twenty-third, I'm not here, so if you guys wanna, and I guess Jake is not here, so I think, uh, let's push it until, when will you be back, Jake?
He's muted right now.
Sorry, um, beginning of April.
So, okay, the twenty-third, so that's beginning of April.
So the first meeting for you guys in, uh, in April will be April.
Thirteen. April thirteen. I'm good on April thirteen to go back.
Okay, April thirteenth in person. I'll note that.
Thank you.
So, I mean, let's ask the other members. Uh, Richard, what do you think?
I agree.
Okay, Troy?
I don't have a problem with that.
So April thirteen, apparently Jake, you, you like that, Veronica?
Uh, I, I think it's better for us to be in person for the public. Um, I personally like being on Zoom because it's more convenient. Um, but, um, Aaron, you said something about hybrid? So what is that?
Yeah, so I don't know if previously, like the W C T V is set up, and if someone wants to make a comment or listen in, um, they're like patch them in. And you're able to, you know, hear what they're saying. I think they put up on the screen as well. Um, so it, it, the, the town meeting vote, they voted that they had, the town had to have hybrid meetings. I don't know, I, maybe that was through late the emergency covid and things like that, but, um, yeah, so it's gonna be hybrid. That's what Ken told me, if it's in person. Uh, but like I said, I mean, Zoom for me personally is more convenient, but I understand what Veronica was saying. I mean, I think this board works well on Zoom, but it's up to you all what you'd wanna do. If you wanna go back April thirteenth, it'll be a hybrid meeting. If not, you can continue Zoom until you feel, you know, fit to go back in person.
I think in person is better. You, you could just see the plans better. You could communicate better. Uh, but whatever you guys like, it doesn't matter to me.
Did we, did we kinda agree that we all wanted to go back on the thirteenth, or are we?
I think so.
I'm confused.
I mean,
I'm, I'm, I'm good with go, I'm good with going back on the thirteenth.
Okay, Veronica, you good?
Yeah.
Troy?
I'm fine.
I'm fine with that, and I guess Jake's fine. So April thirteen, that you did get.
All right, sounds good. So March twenty-third, the ones I process tomorrow will be for on Zoom. They'll save the public hearing notices, but after that,
I'm away, Jake is away, so there'll be four words. Most people, they're gonna say, I don't wanna be heard with four people, so.
Right, okay, sounds good.
Very good. Uh, and anything else?
Um, the one other thing is, you don't have to talk us down, but I'll just remind you guys, there, like, um, the chairman just said about the zoning amendments. If you have any changes you wanna make, send them to myself or Ken because, uh, they have to be in by pretty soon. I think it's March first. So if you have anything you wanna change, I would, uh, let me know or Ken know, so we could try to make that change.
I, I have, I, I've been working with them forever with, uh, the commissioner, the queen, and it's a big list, so I, I'm gonna get together with him hopefully this week or next week to bring him in. And just for everybody to know, these are things we've been talking about all along, the size of a barn, the height of a barn, the F A R, the coverage.
So what about, um, uh, the facility that just got approved, it's got so many on, uh, Sandwich Road? Because the way that our law was written.
Oh, the Crossroads Care Center, the Manix?
Yes, yeah. Are there any changes to? Is anything being discussed about that, Naz, that you know of?
Yeah, I, I know he, he fixed the language, but it is by right. That's the thing. He can't do much about it. It will, he checked it out.
No, I, I, I understand. I'm not, I mean, not being specific to that project, but I'm talking about in terms of defining the language, that a project like that isn't gonna happen again in, on such a small piece of property, I guess. I'm not, I'm personally think that the language needs to change in the bylaw, so that all of that. That project is a lot bigger than the space. I think, I, it, it passed, but I think everybody was kind of in agreement that that was a very, it was a lot to put there on that.
And I just think, I know he found something about the intermediate care. Uh, I think he modified something about it, it, about the parking, and I know he had like thirty pages of changes. I don't recall that. But, uh, I will, I will check. And, uh, I'll check with them, see if he's got that list done. Maybe he could publish it for, I mean, not publish it, send it to all of us to go through it. It was too many things because every time I had an idea or we run to a problem, I used to send it to him. And, uh, and like things Ken gets, goes through, he sent to him or Aaron, everybody else, so he gathered all the info and, and put them together. And believe it or not, we have some, some locations in Wareham. There's no bylaw for how many units you could put on the land. It's just very vague. So, uh, he's gonna do, he's gonna do that, and, uh, so he's fixing this and trying to clarify as much as he can. Uh, I would really, really like to have a, a bylaw written by, I, I know the town's not gonna do it. Hire an attorney who does write bylaws, like Attorney Bobrovsky, the guy who does the forty Vs. He's the, he's real good in writing bylaws, but it'd be very, very expensive. Uh, because our bylaws, it's, it's, it's written based trial and error. Cause we always do errors, trial, you know, find out problems here and there, fix them. But if you really wanna write a real good bylaws, like real good ones, you need time, an attorney who does them, which is very expensive. But, uh, I guess it is what it is. We get, gotta keep doing trial and errors and try to fix it. And I know Mr. Commissioner of the Queen is great at it. I mean, he's very, very good in doing the stuff and to pick on them, so.
The town had hired, um, I was, I don't know, if you, you remember I was talking to you the other day about that financial plan that was created for the town, and that was professionally put together? Um, that, you're talking about like something like that, someone that is professional comes in. Tells us what our densities should be and the best for what.
Exactly, but, and not, not densities and stuff will be more of engineering and planners and, and planners, but I'm talking about the, the drafting of bylaw. Because if you guys notice, it's always a flaw in the bylaw, always. So in order to write it perfect, you need to hire the right people to do it. That's not gonna happen. I know they're not gonna spend the time, the money to do it, so. But guys keep coming up with ideas. We fix them every time as we go. You know?
Sounds good.
I guess Richard's anxious to go, so.
No, no, my patience, my patience level for my internet in the last couple of days has just gone through the roof. I, hey, there's something running around in here and just screwing me up.
There, there's something on my internet's been slow too. I don't know what's going on.
Somebody told me the problem was is because the date was two, 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 two oh, two, two, that everything was having a trouble. I said, well, it gotta be something like that.
Probably.
Um, yeah, I'll just say one last thing. So like I said, if you have anything before March first you wanna add or change, just let me know or Ken know, or I know Naz said you're working with Mr. Aquino, so you can let him know as well. Um, but that's, that's kinda what I, that's all I'm there for.
All right, very well. Okay, uh, can we get a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, so moved.
Okay, what should I adjourn by Veronica? Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Jake. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jake? Jake, Richard?
By the way, it was, it was seconded by me, and I say aye.
Ah, okay, sorry. I wasn't looking. And Veronica?
Aye.
And myself, aye. John, thank you. We'll see you next hearing.
Good night.
All right, everybody. Have a great night.
Thank you.